Direct from City Hall in Champaign, Illinois. Cablevision brings you a town hall meeting with U.S. Senator Paul Simon. To call in your question or comment, dial 351-4479. And now Mayor Robert Dodd of Champaign.
Welcome all of you and the viewing audience today. It's very important in the role of government to have and hear the voices that come from groups like your own. We welcome you and Senator Paul Simon, of course, is here to hear your ideas, your thoughts, so that all of us can grow and benefit together. With great pride because Senator Simon and I go back a long time, just in passing acquaintance here and there in other cities, from following his career from day one. It's a career of independence, a career of concern for people and for the needs of people. And I think he serves the state of Illinois very well because of that attitude. We hope today we can share with him some of our thoughts as we welcome Senator Paul Simon.
Thank you, Mayor Dodd. It's a pleasure to be here and I want to acknowledge also the presence of the mayor of Rantoul here. This is an experiment. We have had a lot of town meetings around the state of Illinois. This is the first time we're combining a town meeting here in the city council chambers or wherever it is with a television town meeting. And so we're going to get directions about closing and other things. We'll take a few calls by phone. We're going to primarily try and hear you and I think they want people who ask questions here to come up to the mic. Is that correct? All right. So we will do that. Let me just add, we have just one general rule and that is we try and limit questions to one per person so we can get as many people in as possible. And also if you have comments or suggestions, if you can keep your comments fairly brief so we can get as many people in as possible. But basically this is your meeting. I want to take three minutes to talk about something that I think is very important to all of us. And then we're, the meeting is yours, whatever you want to talk about. What I want to talk about is the balanced budget amendment that four of us, two Democrats, two Republicans are suggesting that we have for the Constitution. Now, why do we need a balanced budget amendment of the Constitution? Can't Congress and the President on our own balance the budget? The answer is in theory we can, but in practice we have done it only rarely since the beginning of, since the end of World War II. And we face this problem. If you were to put interest rates on a graph, it would be going up like this. We now have, our number one expenditure is Social Security, our number two expenditure is defense, our number three expenditure is interest. By the end of this decade, and we're, we're right in the middle, but before the end of this decade, the number one expenditure will be interest, the number two expenditure will be Social Security, the number three expenditure will be defense. Interest is crowding out anything else. For those of us who believe in education or assistance in the healthcare field, help to the elderly and other things, the chance of doing what government ought to do is getting crowded out. And we simply have to get a hold of this thing. Bond Week, the leading publication for bonding publications, says that we are now at the point where every four years we are doubling the cost of interest to the federal government. We simply have to get a hold of this. We're a nation living on a huge credit card and we're saying, send the bill to our children and our grandchildren. We can't keep it up. And there are some specific problems as a result. If there are farmers here, I don't need to tell the farmers what's happened to exports. And exports this year for the farmers, I hate to tell you, the anticipated agricultural exports are down, will be down another $10 billion over last year's drop. And that is primarily due to that overvalued dollar which is caused by the deficit. The gross interest expenditure this next fiscal year will be approximately $181 billion. Most of us in the audience here are old enough to remember when John F. Kennedy was President of the United States and for the first time in fiscal year 1962, we had a total federal budget of $100 billion. Now we're talking about $181 billion for interest alone. And a couple of other factors are important here. One is that in May of this year, for the first time since 1914, we became a debtor nation, owing more to other countries than they owe to us. Sometime this year we will pass Brazil being the number one debtor nation of the world. If we do not change the trends, in the next three years, we will pass Brazil, Argentina, and Mexico, the three big debtor nations combined. Now, what's the danger of that? The danger is this, at some point down the road, inevitably, there's going to be some kind of a blip in our economy. It may be an Ohio savings and loan problem, it may be rural banks closing, I don't know what it is. But at some point, there will be a problem. And at that point, people in other countries may very well ask, I wonder if my money is safe in the United States? And if they start that run and pull their money out of our country, we have very, very serious problems. The only way to avoid that is to get a hold of our financial situation. And so we think this constitutional amendment is a way of forcing us to do what frankly we have been unwilling to do before. I remember when I was elected to the state legislature, I received a letter from a man in South Roxanne, Illinois. He had 13 points to his letter. First 12 were increased services he wanted from government and the 13th point was cut taxes. And believe it or not, we have adopted his program. And we have to move away from that program. Now, that's the end of my speech. This is your meeting, anything at all. And, okay, go ahead. And you, you get at the microphone yourselves and I won't need to pick anybody out from the audience. Yes, sir?
My name is Gary Henigman and I'm an independent oil producer. The Treasury tax reform proposals affecting the domestic petroleum industry will seriously hamper exploration and development of crude oil, specifically expensing of intangible drilling costs, loss of percentage depletion, and write-off of dry hole costs. I'd like to know what your view is on this particular area of the Treasury proposal.
Yeah, yes. The, I think we ought to do what we can to encourage the independent oil producer, the person who is risking, who goes out to explore for oil. That is not true, we don't, do not need the same kind of encouragement for the major oil companies. One of the problems, incidentally, is the problem with our tax laws that encourage mergers. It is more profitable now to explore for oil on the floor of the New York Stock Exchange than it is in Champaign County or Douglas County or any county in this area. And that simply doesn't make sense. There is a second thing that we can do that is tied in with this. The Republican members of the United States Senate suggested to President Reagan that we have an oil import fee. I happen to think that makes sense. It makes sense from a variety of ways. It makes sense from the viewpoint of conservation, it makes sense from the viewpoint of encouraging our own energy resources, and it makes sense from the viewpoint of balancing this budget. A $10 import fee would raise about $18 billion and would be a step in the direction that we have to, have to be going. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Carmen Percival. Welcome Senator to Champaign. We're very proud of you.
Thank you. We have that mic a little too high for you there, don't we?
I'm built close to the ground.
Okay.
My question is, I'm bewildered at the strong stance Congress has taken on the issue of apartheid in South Africa, and which I may add, I'm delighted, but perplexed at the hypocrisy of this administration and their civil rights record right here in America. Can this hypocrisy be rectified, Senator? And if so, how? Thank you.
Okay. The question is, well, you heard the question on South Africa. I spent a half a day last June with Bishop Tutu. I spoke at the commencement at Dickinson College in Pennsylvania. And he received an honorary degree that day and it was one of those occasions where we had lunch together and went through a whole series of ceremonies together. And had a chance for somewhat in-depth discussion about the South African situation. Bishop Tutu, an Episcopal bishop, is just a solid, fine, substantial citizen that any country would be, should be proud to claim as a citizen. He said that if there is not change peacefully, South Africa is going to erupt into unbelievable violence. And I think we ought to learn from history. The only other country in recent history that had institutional racism was Germany in the 1930s. And the United States nominally was opposed to that, what Hitler did, just as we're nominally opposed to what South Africa did. But we did not take firm steps to discourage that institutional racism. And it erupted into violence and that violence was not contained within the boundaries of that one country. And the violence that will erupt if we can't achieve change in South Africa is not going to be contained within the boundaries of that one country either. We have to move for change. I'm going to support the resolution of, that is before the Senate, that we'll be voting on in September. There are aspects of it that I don't think are quite as effective that they, as they might be, though it is frankly an agreed thing where we've all agreed we're not going to have amendments. To, for example, to ban cruderans, which we're doing, is not as effective in my opinion because gold is such a small commodity. You can put in your pocket and take a good chunk of it to some other country. As if we were to ban coal or steel or floor spar. Pretty tough to transfer steel or coal or floor spar from one country to another and then import it to the United States. But the message is fairly clear. And I would say to anyone who may hear my voice eventually from the government of South Africa, this is simply the first step on the part of Congress. We intend to follow through. And if change does not come as a result of this step, there will be other steps. Not that we are piously saying we have solved all our problems, we haven't obviously. But I'm old enough at the age of 56 to have seen great change in this country. I was involved in the early civil rights struggles that we had. Frankly, I'm proud as an American of what we have done. We still have a long way to go, but we've accomplished a great deal. And I think we have to say to South Africa, you can also accomplish a great deal if you will accommodate to reality. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Clara Clark from Urbana, Illinois. And I would like to know why the Social Security penalizes people born between the years 17, 1917 and 1921?
Okay.
They call that the notch baby. Why and what percentage are we penalized?
Okay. It is, I can't tell you the percent, but there is a, an inequity that is there for people in what we call the notch years. In theory, I can agree that something ought to be done. I have to tell you practically, it is not going to happen this year or until we get our fiscal house in order getting it straightened out. Straightening it out would cost billions of dollars. And I would love to tell you, ma'am, we're going to get it done, but it is, it is one of those inequities that is not going to be straightened out as long as we have the kind of serious financial problems we have right now.
Well, why was it done in the first place?
That happened before I got into Congress. I don't, I don't know the answer on that one, ma'am. In many of these things, incidentally, arbitrary dates are set and inequities do work, come in. I received a letter recently from someone who has been working since the age of 17, is 61 and a half. And she wrote to me and say, I have a friend who is 62, has only worked eight years. Here I've worked from 17 to 61 and a half. It is not fair. And there is an inequity there, but we have said you have to be 62 before you can get Social Security. It's an arbitrary date and at some point you simply have to set arbitrary dates. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Paul Bill Hodge from a little town out west, the town here at Seymour.
I know where Seymour is. I had a, I used to, once in a while Seymour would have a chicken dinner on a Saturday and football games.
Right.
All right.
Last time I sat down with you was several years ago when you were in the House and we came to Washington, you and Congressman Madigan put on a luncheon in Carl Albert's dining room. I think you remember that, where we had the whole house.
Yeah, I don't know who paid or you paid. I can't remember that.
Yeah. I've got one question since I am interested in agriculture. How important is agriculture really to Washington?
Well, the answer is agriculture is very important to the country. How much many of the people in the Washington scene understand the dimensions of this problem, I do not know. But we have this August recess yet, right now, and my hope is that a lot of people are going back home who are, are starting to understand the problem. And for most of you who, today here, who are not farmers, let me just tell you that we face a very serious problem. If I can find my little note in my pocket here. Yes. Yesterday I was in Kankakee and I called the Irwin Grain Company. I said, what's the price of beans and corn today? Beans, $4.97, corn, $2.36. I asked my staff to check what the price was five years ago. Five years ago it was corn, $3.43, beans, $8.96. And if you add an inflation factor, that's probably around $4.10. Now, if, if we had $4.00 corn and $10.00 soybeans, you wouldn't be asking the question. Part of the problem is we have fewer and fewer members of the Senate and the House who understand agriculture. And I semi-understand it. I grew up in a farm. I milked cows, but you don't milk cows today like you did when I worked in a farm. I baled hay, but I baled the old square bales. I don't know anything, I said, I call them jelly roll bales that I see out in the fields now. I don't know anything about that. Hog operations are totally different today. So even where I understand, I have a farm background and I understand a little, I don't understand really modern farming. And then I have to vote on sugar and peanuts and rice and a lot of commodities where I really start getting thin on my knowledge. But the farm problem is much more than farmers. 23% of the farmers in this nation are in serious financial trouble right now. My guess is that in Champaign County that would be a lower figure because you happen to be blessed with above-average agricultural wealth in this area. But right here in Champaign County, I am sure you can find a lot of farmers who have very serious problems. And with corn production anticipated to be 8% higher, soybean production 5% to 6% higher, with exports down, the immediate situation does not look encouraging. There are a number of us in both political parties, including Bob Dole, the majority leader, who I think have some understanding of the problem. But in the White House, there is not, I don't think at this point yet, an adequate recognition of the problem. And we have to, in fact, work out a compromise. We could pass a better bill than the White House wants, but we don't have the votes to override a presidential veto. So we're going to have to achieve some kind of practical compromise. Where we're going on that, I don't know. Thank you.
John Leisure from Fusland, Illinois.
From where?
Fusland.
I thought I knew every town in Illinois, but I, that's a...
150 people and 250 dogs.
Oh, okay.
I got hurt three years ago out here at Chanute Air Force Base and the Department of Labor has really gotten lax. And I've been in contact with your office in Chicago and they seem to think they was going to get cleared up right away and now it's gone lax again. I'd appreciate anything you could do.
Okay. We, if we have a couple of staff people here, Jerry Sinclair right over here, if you can give him your name and address and Social Security number, a little, a little background, we'll try and check it out. We will try and help. I can't promise that we can get results. Let me, talking, talking about small towns, I have to tell you one small-town Illinois story. Back about three or four months ago, Barry Goldwater came up to me on the floor of the Senate and said, you know where Bowen, Illinois is? And I said, well, I've heard of Bowen, but I, I hate to tell you, I can't place it. Well, I, he said, my mother was born in Bowen, Illinois. Well, I checked it out and Bowen, Illinois is a town about 300 over near McComb. And I called the Highway Department, we got a sign made. It says, "Welcome to Bowen, the home of Josephine Williams, the mother of Senator Barry Goldwater." And I presented that to the mayor of Bowen and had a picture taken and I gave the picture to Barry. And now he wants to come to Bowen, Illinois. So we're going to have Barry Goldwater visit small-town Illinois before long. Yes?
Senator Simon. My name is John Miles. I live in Urbana, Illinois. And I have a question just concerning our national debt arising from this situation. We all know, as you've stated, the problems of the farmers, they need some money to get over their bad spot. And letters from Senator Dixon pleads for $50 million. We think that's a terrible amount and that we scarcely can afford it. That's the thought of many people, whether it should be supported or not. But in the, in a, in a, in a letter, not a letter, but in the news gazette for June of 1975, I read this. "U.S. support concerning the support we give to Egypt and Israel." During this period, that's concerning the recent turbulence there, our support to those countries. During this period, U.S. aid to Israel has risen from about $2.5 billion a year to some $4-5 billion per year. Now, my question specifically is, we're concerned with the national debt. What becomes of, say, the 5 billion that we, are the many billions we send to many countries over the world? Does that add to our national debt? And specifically, what becomes of those funds relative to our, our financial state of the United States? Those figures are, are a little difficult to picture. Now, 50 million is only 1/100 of 5 billion. 5 billion is 100 times 50 million. My thought is, is that the quagmire that's pulling the United States down into terrific debt or what becomes of those funds? And where, where do they, where do we get that money? That great money? Thank you very much.
It's a, it's a very good question. The, they're all, it is part of the quagmire. Everything is part of the quagmire. Things that I believe in are part of the quagmire. We, we somehow have to pull it all into, into perspective and things that I believe in, like aid to Israel and Egypt, or education funding or other things, all are jeopardized by this fiscal problem that we have. If we can, if we spend $180 billion this year in interest and $200-some billion next year in interest, that means the squeeze is going to be on a lot of these programs. There are areas where we can save money. My own belief is that in the, in the area of foreign aid, we ought to do a lot less in military aid, more in economic aid. That... And, and let me just use Central America as an example. In, where I think we can be much more responsive to the situation there. And incidentally, I just spotted your state representative, Representative Satharay right out here and I'm sorry I didn't see her before. But in Central America today, we are very much involved militarily, in my opinion, excessively involved militarily. In Central America today, we provide 391 scholarships for students to come to University of Illinois or SIU or other schools in this country. In that same area, the Soviets now provide 7,500 scholarships. Now, I do not suggest that everyone who goes to the University of Moscow or Patrice Lumumba University comes back a dedicated communist. I do think we have to recognize that just as someone who comes to University of Illinois goes back to his or her country with a tilt that is favorable to our country and our system, so people who go to the University of Moscow or Patrice Lumumba University, particularly there where, where political indoctrination is, you know, is part of every class, there is a political tilt to people who come back. I think we'd be much better off cutting back on the military assistance in Central America, spending more money on scholarships in Central America. They'd be better off, we'd be better off. There'd be fewer people killed, the world would be a better place. I think there are areas we can... Yes, ma'am?
My name is Sharon Dorsey and I support your initiatives to reduce the defense budget in particular as it relates to nuclear weapons and policies that oppress people such as what you spoke about in Central America. My question relates to the U.S. Peace Tax Fund Senate Bill 1468. I was pleased that you are a co-sponsor of this in the House. I would like to know what the status of this bill is now and what your intentions are in supporting it now.
Okay. This, this is a bill that says that if you, for reasons of conscience, don't want to have your money going to, for the defense budget, you would still pay your taxes, but it would go to other purposes. Frankly, it has, is not a bill that has any chance of passage, but it is a bill that sends a signal to the Defense Department, you better slow down on some of these expenditures, you better reexamine your policies. And I, I think it is one of those bills that has a healthy impact even though it can't be passed. Yes, sir?
My name is Art Traugott. I'm a psychiatrist at Carl Clinic in Urbana. My concern is the funding of long-term care for our population. At the present time, the only program which provides funding for nursing home care for people is through the Medicaid program. We obviously can't expect this to provide all the needs for our population. As our population is aging, this is a situation which many families have to face. And what is being done to look at this particular problem and what might be done to encourage other funding into the area such as private insurance means?
That is an extremely important question. And what is happening is not only that, that some citizens who need long-term care face, you're the expert and I'm, but they, they don't like to be in a situation where they are, they are a problem on their families, dragged financially in their families, which they turn out to be in many cases. And the families are devastated. I talked to families where all of a sudden they have to pay these huge monthly bills. They simply can't afford it. We are drafting a bill and I don't want to fool anyone, this isn't the kind of thing that's going to pass tomorrow. A bill that would permit every American employee who is covered by Social Security to voluntarily sign up if they want to for what would be Medicare Part C. We have under Medicare now A and B. Medicare Part C would be where you would voluntarily, if you want, pay 1% of your income into a Part C that would take care of long-term care, would not cover all the bills, but would cover up to 80% of the bills. And it would provide at least psychological relief to a lot of people. Fortunately, most senior citizens will never have to go to a nursing home, will not need that long-term care. But even those who do not need it are worried, maybe I'm going to have to have that, maybe I'm going to be a drag on the family. The problem you bring out is an extremely important one. I think we have to have more attention to it. It is a kind of a problem, we're not going to solve this today or tomorrow, but we better be paying more attention to it because our population is getting older. Fortunately, thanks in part to medical research, thanks in part to cleaner air and cleaner water, this year we have four times as many people 80 years old as we did 10 years ago. And that trend is going to continue. So I thank you. you for your question, and I hope we can get more people focusing on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hi. My name is John Thaler. I'm a, a member of the physics department at the university. First, I'd like to thank you for your votes in the past against Star Wars funding, Reagan's trillion-dollar fraud. I'd like just to mention that not only has three-quarters of the Illinois physics department signed a statement they won't participate in Star Wars research, but at a recent national meeting, everyone I talked to agreed with this position, and this statement is now circulating in more than three dozen physics departments around the country. Um, this effectively demonstrates that most physicists find Star Wars research to be misguided and dangerous, contrary to Reagan's PR campaign. I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about your current thoughts on this matter?
You bet. And I'm glad I planted you in the audience to answer. Uh, first of all, if I may digress from your question, because you are with the physics department there. Um, we do not study science, math, and foreign languages in this country as we ought to. There, when you graduate from secondary school in the Soviet Union, and I could pick a number of other countries, you graduate from secondary school in the Soviet Union, you have four years of physics. 16% of those who graduate from high school in the United States have one year of physics. We have, believe it or not, more school districts in the United States than we have physics teachers in the United States. We're in a competitive world. We simply can't tolerate that in the future. Yes, I have read the statement of the University of Illinois professors. I applaud it. I, as a matter of fact, inserted it in the congressional record, uh, so that others would learn about it. Let me just take a minute to talk about Star Wars and the two basic flaws of the Star Wars concept. The first basic flaw is it won't work. Now, that's a pretty basic flaw. Uh, let me, let me, uh, let me tell you the, the theory. This is that we would have a shield in space, and that shield would prevent Soviet satellites that come through space from hitting our country. Now, the general in charge says it will be 30 to 90% effective. Now, let's just assume it is 90% effective, the best forecast they have. There are, in the Soviet Union today, 9,000 large, what we call strategic warheads. We have about 9,500 in the United States. These, and I'm not counting the, what we call the tactical nuclear warheads, the smaller warheads. Each of these strategic warheads has more power than all the bombs of World War II, including Nagasaki and Hiroshima. If this is 90% effective, that means that there would be 900 of those Soviet strategic missiles, each of which has more power than all the bombs of World War II, that could be reined upon our country. That's the end of us. The second theory, the thing that's wrong with that theory, is a lot of nuclear warheads don't go into space. A cruise missile, for example, doesn't go into space. Uh, many of our submarine missiles do not go into space. And you can, you don't need a, a dramatic delivery system for a nuclear warhead. You can put a nuclear warhead on the back end of a pickup truck, park it in downtown Manhattan, push a button 1,000 miles away, and there is no more New York City. Uh, so to think that we're protecting ourselves just is not rational. Second is the cost. Um, the administration says it will cost up to $500 billion. Uh, former Secretary of, uh, Defense Jim Schlesinger says it'll cost $700 to $800 billion. Uh, former Secretary of Defense Harold Brown says $1 trillion. Committee of Scientists, maybe you were on it, I don't know, uh, made a statement saying it'll cost 1.3 trillion. I don't think anybody knows. But what do these figures mean? Well, well, first of all, they have something to do with this balanced budget problem. But, uh, there is, the, the biggest project in the history of humanity up to this point is the interstate highway system. That interstate highway system has cost us up to now $123 billion. So, you're talking about something that is going to be many times as costly as the interstate highway system that won't work. And how will we pay for it? Well, my friends, there are only three ways to pay for it. There, there are no other alternatives. One is to drastically curtail Social Security, education, farm programs, all the other things we believe in. Or second, have huge tax increases. Or third, have even greater deficits and runaway inflation. Those are the three alternatives. You take your choice. My choice is don't build the system. Russ?
I'm Russ Zwer from Urbana, and I'm an educator.
And a regular, he knocks on my door regularly in Washington, DC.
Uh, first of all, I'm sure you know that I applaud your efforts for education. Uh, and the, uh, we've talked previously about the National Institute of Education, which is an agency that provides a good deal of research money, uh, to study problems. As you know, the, uh, National Institute has been supporting research in reading for a number of years. And this year, uh, our own Center for the Study of Reading at the University of Illinois, uh, produced a book titled Becoming a Nation of Readers, which provides practical, uh, recommendations for improving reading instruction in this country. The problem that I'm concerned about is that there are those in the Department of Education, there are those in the Department of Education and in the National Institute of Education who view the work of the Center for the Study of Reading as completing the efforts that are needed in reading research. That's kind of like telling the medical profession when penicillin was discovered that no more research is needed. What can we do to, uh, help Congress, help the Department of Education understand that research and education is an ongoing need, and especially in the area of reading, which is cornerstone of all learning?
Okay. The, for those of you who may not have heard the question, basically it is, we have had some research at, on the Center for Reading here, University of Illinois. Uh, some now regard it as the research is completed, we don't need any more research in this field, uh, since a report was issued. How do we sustain, uh, and continue that research? First of all, I did receive the report. Uh, it was good enough that I sent a note over to the Secretary of Education, with whom I don't always agree on everything, and, uh, told Bill Bennett, I said, "Here's a report. I think you ought to personally read." And, uh, I'm pleased to note that in, uh, two or three speeches now, he has been quoting from the report. So, I think we have convinced the Secretary of Education of the importance of that research. And, uh, my guess is this is a battle we can win. Uh, there are other battles where I'm not so optimistic. Yes, sir?
Hello. My name is Ellis Rose, and I'm a student. And I'm here to talk about the issue of AIDS. Um, AIDS is an epidemic which in four years has risen to include a caseload of over 12,000 people, uh, in Illinois. Illinois has the seventh-largest caseload in the nation. Um, over 220 are in Chicago, over 50 are downstate. And Chicago is experiencing a, a doubling of every six months in terms of their caseload. I'm concerned because it's spreading into the heterosexual population now at the same rate that it did in the gay population four years ago. And I'm concerned that the regular administration has said that this is a number-one health concern of theirs, but they're not showing that in their actions. And I was wondering how you feel about it and what you can do.
Yes. I, I support research in this area. Uh, it is a problem, and it's not simply the homosexual population. Uh, it is a problem that in some cases is transferred through blood transfusions and other things. Uh, it, uh, it is clearly an area where it is, you have a devastating disease, uh, that we have to move on. Let me just broaden the question just a bit. To say the whole area of medical research is an area where we ought to be doing more, more work. Uh, we ought to, as we look at the budget, say, "What is going to pay off in the long run?" And when you do that, then I think you pinpoint things that, uh, like education, like medical research. And I think then you say, some, we can, we can probably get by with a few, uh, few less nuclear missiles and some other things. We ought to be listening to military leaders like General Rogers, our NATO commander, only five-star American general we have, who says we ought to be cutting back on nuclear missiles and buying some more conventional, less expensive weapons that give us more, uh, a more flexible response. And then, spend more money, uh, first of all, get that deficit down and spend more money on things that have a long-term payoff. And the loss of human life, the loss of, uh, that we're experiencing through AIDS, through arthritis, through cancer, through cystic fibrosis, and all these other things, these we ought to be attacking. Thank you for your good question.
Hi. My name is Christina Comodina, and I'm from Champaign. Um, Illinois is one of the largest producers of hazardous waste in the nation, and there are over 30 Superfund cleanup sites in Illinois. I have two questions. One, what is the status of current Superfund legislation? And two, do you favor increased financial support for research to improve hazardous waste management practices?
Yes, I've, if I may answer the latter part of your question, I favor increased research, but the, uh, the primary need is not increased research, but using the knowledge we have and applying it, and just using some common sense. Uh, I'm a co-sponsor of the Superfund reauthorization, uh, reauthorization at an, at an increased level. And again, this is one of these things that pays off in the long run. Uh, let me give you a very practical example. I visited the Rutiger family in Will County. Mr. and Mrs. Rutiger and their five children literally built their own farm home, very proud of the, of a fine home that they built with their own hands. Right next to them, company bought land, and they had made a landfill out of it, depositing toxic substances. Now, these toxic substances are put in steel barrels. But steel barrels don't, you know, they, they don't stay steel barrels forever. And gradually, this leaks out. The Rutigers can't drink the water from their well now anymore. Uh, the, the, the five Rutiger children were out to catch the school bus in front of their home and had to come into their home with nausea because of the fumes from the field. I happen to note, out around their home, about two acres of strawberries. Guess who eats those strawberries? You and I eat those strawberries. We don't know what's in those strawberries. The day when we can bury toxic wastes and think that we dispose of toxic waste that way has to become a thing of the past. We either have to recycle them, or in some cases, and this is where research comes, comes in, some, some cases, we can burn them without damage. But to bury toxic substances means inevitably we affect our water system, we affect our soil, and what we think we are burying, in fact, we're putting into our own bodies. And, uh, we have to move away from that. Yes, sir?
My name is Charles Becker, and I have just one question here. Uh, will you support the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's proposal to lower the fleet average fuel economy from 27.5 gallons, uh, miles per gallon to 26 miles per gallon for the next modeled year?
The, uh, I may be giving you the wrong answer. Uh, the, I don't know which side you're on, sir, but, uh, I think it is a mistake for us to, uh, to move, to move away from our requirements for fuel economy. It's very interesting that... I'm not getting much applause in the mail for my vote on that one. Uh, but, uh, I think it is clearly in the national interest to maintain those standards, both for reasons of conservation. And second, one of the three automobile makers has spent hundreds of millions of dollars to meet those standards, and that's Chrysler. And for us to say, "Okay, after they have spent all this money, but to meet these standards, we're gonna lower the standards," I think is unfair to Chrysler. Uh, and, uh, I think Ford and General Motors can, uh, can comply. So, they're gonna have to spend a little more money to do it, but we're gonna be a better nation if we comply. I can remember when we passed the, uh, the requirement for unleaded fuel. And I remember that, that people were saying it would be the end of the automobile market and everything else. Well, we did it. It didn't, and it's turned out to be a healthy thing. Uh, I think we can have both a healthy automobile market in this country and increasing requirements for both air effluent and, um, gasoline consumption. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hello, Senator Simon. I am only naturalized American citizen. I hope I will be able to speak out what I have in mind.
We are as proud of naturalized American citizens as we are of any other American citizen. And I'm happy to have you here.
Senator Simon, uh, I don't know exactly to put in English terminology, but I know that President of the United States signed bill for back child supports in the amount of $4 billion. My question to you is, to whom the child support dollars belong? In our case, our daughter established her existence, and why her child support dollars were donated by the Honorable Harold Del Johnson, Circuit Judge, Champaign County Court, to the American lawyer, John J. Lawless, Attorney at Law, 410 Robison Building, Champaign, Illinois, 61820. What shall be your congressional action without any prejudice to the child or children of naturalized American citizens? Thank you.
Now, if, if, as I understand your question, yes, please, but you were asking about a case that is pending in court? If, I, I am not permitted to enter into any, uh, any case that is before the courts.
It, it is not a question of the legal system. I am not trying to reform the existing system in Champaign County Courthouse. My point is, what shall be your action that those money, those dollars paid by the parent do not go to the, somebody else except to the child, more specifically to the children of naturalized American citizens?
Oh, okay. The, uh, in, in this case, frankly, as I read your question, is a question, a child support question, decision by the courts, uh, that is really up to the courts. And if you want the, that court decision modified, you will have to go to the court. I, I do not have any authority to modify that. I, I wish I could give you a different answer, sir, but that's...
It's not a question of modification. It's a question of your human American mind and feeling. What shall be your action that those dollars don't go except to the child for a piece of bread and butter?
Well, again, you have to get to the courts on that decision. I, I can't change the court decision. Yes, ma'am?
Mayor Dodd, Senator Paul, I am mainly Smith from Champaign along, and I work with healthcare consumers and public action. I'm board member and, uh, legal aid lawyer. And I'm, I'm here with my main thing I want to speak about. I gets, uh, I just wanna bring these questions up. I get a part, uh, Social Security and part SSI. And before Mr. Reagan got in there, I, I could work a little, you know, you don't get too much. And, uh, I got this job for the senior, but after he got in, I couldn't, couldn't do no work. And I don't get that way. Sometime in winter time, I light because of what I'm getting. And I just wanna know, did you know anything possible about that, that you got this job?
I, I understand the problem you face. We have, through the changes in the law, that I might add, I voted against, we have discouraged the working poor. Uh, people are forced, in fact, to stop working and just to be totally dependent on SSI or welfare or whatever it may be. And, um, I think that's a mistake.
Yeah.
I think we ought to encourage people to work and not discourage them. And I appreciate your question.
'Cause some, there's some only people not able to work. Well, that would save a lot of strain off of that if they were, could do a little work. 'Cause since they, first had you retired, and I didn't want you to work a little, but some problem that you still can't work, I think that would...
Right. And, and we ought to encourage productivity in this country and not discourage it. Your point is a good one. Thank you, man.
And I thank you for, you all for fighting for the senior citizens, I mean, Social Security, that it stands like it is. So, thank you.
I, I, I thank you. I, I'm, I'm pleased to fight for senior citizens, 'cause I hope to be one someday.
Senator Simon, my name's Rebecca Walker. I'm a new constituent of yours. I'm from the infamous 8th district in, in Vienna. I want to reiterate the concern over healthcare. I'm also with the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, and, um, we are concerned about long-term care, as the gentleman spoke earlier. In fact, I understand that before I arrived in the community, there was an incident... In fact, I understand that before I arrived in the community, there was an incidence of one nursing home wanting to turn public aid patients out into the streets. We also are concerned about AIDS research. I coordinate the Medicare Task Force, and here in Champaign County, we've been able to set up a program called Medicare 100, Medicare Plus. You might have noticed Clara's button earlier. But doctors agree to treat seniors at the cost that Medicare will reimburse them. It works out great for the seniors, they can get healthcare. It works out good for the hospital, they can increase their benefits. A while back, there was a bill introduced called the Kennedy Gap Heart Bill, which was to be a wraparound bill to make sure that states do things like make sure that doctors will take Medicare assignment, make sure that there isn't dumping of patients from for-profit hospitals into not-for-profit hospitals. My question to you is, when can we look forward to more active debate on this question? And what can we do to get more people in the community aware of the problem?
All right. People, whether they want to or not, are going to become aware of the problem in the next few years. We have, if I can just back up and give some general background, we have under Social Security, three trust funds. There's the retirement fund, that fortunately is in good shape till well into the next century, if we get our fiscal house in order and don't move toward inflation. Second is the disability fund, and that's in reasonably good shape. The third is the Medicare fund. That is not in good shape. In the Medicare fund, we face a variety of problems. Let me just indicate two reasons for the difficulty. This last year, medical-hospital costs increased an average of 7%. About double the cost of living. The previous year was 13.2%, about triple the average cost of living. We, you know, those resources are gradually being drained. And we face problems in, you mentioned what's been worked out here for senior citizens, which sounds great, which is not the case in most communities. When you're under Social Security and under Medicare, you have to pay $400 when you go in the hospital now. A lot of people on Social Security don't have $400. We don't cover anything on out-of-hospital drugs. I talked to a lady recently getting $406 a month Social Security, her drug bill is over $200 a month. She says, "I just can't make it." And I can believe her. We don't cover dentures, hearing aids, eyeglasses. All three are very important to senior citizens. As I travel around the state, every once in a while, someone will come up to me and say, "Paul," or "Senator, please excuse my appearance, but I can't afford false teeth." Well, you know, if we can get a man to the moon, we somehow will be able to get dentures to the people who built our society. And I'm not suggesting that government's going to be able to pick up the tab for all these things. I am suggesting these are all part of the equation that we're going to have to look at. And the long-term healthcare problem that was mentioned before is going to have to be part of that equation. Within the next four to six years, we're going to be forced to have a reappraisal of the healthcare delivery system. And I think it's important that we have your input, the input of senior citizens, the input of the medical community, everyone, so that we can devise something that makes sense. But it is, as you know, a very, very complex, complicated area.
But Congress is going to be debating the issue before four to six years from now?
Well, we're going to be debating it some, but the really, we are going to be forced within the next four years, I think, to have what I would call a very fundamental debate. In the meantime, we will skirt the issue, is my guess, I hope I'm wrong, but we will not get a hold of it in a meaningful way. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Putman. I'm a member of the county board in Champaign County, and I'd like to thank you to start with for continuing to be in the U.S. Senate, the kind of political figure that allows people like myself to continue to have heroes and role models.
You're mine.
Right. There are a number of other county board, city council members, people who are active in local government in the room. You probably know how much we all depend on the continued existence of revenue sharing to do the kind of job we want to do. What is your frank assessment of the possibility of that, of revenue sharing staying with us for a while longer?
Yes, I'm afraid my answer is not going to be a pleasant one for you. The reality is that revenue sharing is going to continue in 1986. We had a fairly decisive vote in the Senate. Senator Wendell Ford of Kentucky offered an amendment to continue it in 1987 and beyond, but at a 25% lower figure. I voted for the Ford amendment, but we were outvoted. I would say if I were on the county board, or the mayor here, Mayor Dodd, I don't think the county board, or the city of Champaign, or Urbana, or Rantoul, or anything else can plan on any revenue sharing beyond 1986. I wish I could give you a different answer. I've been given a signal, we have five minutes left, so make your questions brief, and I'll try and make my answers brief, and so we can move on. Yes?
Okay, my name is Timothy Huey, and I'm from Champaign.
And his sister works in my staff, so we have to give you a special preference here.
My question has to do with your support of some sort of national service, that people would be able to, or be required to serve their country, not necessarily in the military, but to give up, you know, 12 or 18 months of their lives in service to our country, whether it be in, you know, civic duty or military service, if that's what they desire. Do you support that? And if you do, what are the feasibilities of that coming about?
Okay. Let me, and I may get in a little trouble with some of the audience here in Champaign in my answer to this question. Within the next 10 years, at some point, we will be faced, I think, with a probability of a draft. Because the age enlistment group is going down, will go down 20 to 25% in the next 10 years. I do not favor having any kind of student deferment, if and when we have a draft. So that, because the student deferment means we have an economic draft. We draft the children of the poor rather than across the board. And so if we have a draft, I favor a universal service where everyone is required to serve for one year, where if you go into the military, you get special education benefits, but if you choose to work for a mental hospital, or a park district, or the peace car, or something else, you can do this. Everyone would owe the country one year. My reason for favoring that kind of an approach, to much too great an extent, in Vietnam, in Lebanon, and elsewhere, the people who die are the children of the poor. And that is fundamentally wrong. I also remember, never forget, when we sent our military advisers, Del Salvador, Congressman Clarence Long of Maryland, standing up and saying, "I was the only member of Congress who had a son in Vietnam." And I couldn't help but think, if there had been more sons of members of Congress in Vietnam, we would have been out of Vietnam a heck of a lot sooner than we are now. Now, I have been given a signal, we have about one minute left. The next lady, if you can make it a real fast question, I'll try and give you a real fast answer.
I'll speak very quickly. The topic is Central America, and specifically, aid to the countries. What right do we as a nation have to undermine the government of another nation? And what's your stand on that? How does your voting record go along with that? And when can we return morality to the United States' foreign policy?
And I should do it in 30 seconds, all right. I have opposed aid to the countries. I don't think we have any business trying to overthrow governments in other countries, no matter how we dislike the government. And I think we have to recognize that Uncle Sam is not a popular figure in much of Latin America. We ought to low-key it. I think we'd be much more effective in combating Marxism and the other problems in that area. We ought to be concerned about the problems of people. If we're concerned about them, we'll be much more effective politically. Let me thank all of you. I think it's important to serve you effectively, that I not just sit in Washington and listen to lobbyists, that I come out here. And you have made me a better senator. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.